So notice is hereby given that the Planning Board and Department of Public Works, Tree Warden, will hold a joint public hearing on Monday, July 30th, 2018, at 6:30 PM in Town Hall, on the application of K&amp;G Development Corporation Kingston for 45 Taylor Street, Pembroke, Mass., to cut, trim, or remove trees in the right of way and/or to tear down or destroy a town wall, a stone wall, or portions thereof in the right of way, in order to construct a proposed subdivision in Town Libby's Lane. All right, so we've opened the town meeting and I'd like to ask for a 10-minute postponement until we have a quorum.
You're gonna go for five minutes maybe just to kiss?
Well, we're already five minutes in, so let's do 10 minutes.
We're gonna reopen the public meeting. Apologize for the delay. So we're reopening the public hearing for the scenic road and public shade trade requirements for subdivision number 1802 located at 45 Taylor Street and entitled Libby's Lane, consisting of five new single-family houses, one existing building house, and a new cul-de-sac road. This is joint public hearing with the Tree Warden. Mr. Paul Myers here is with us tonight. And we have here scenic road plan submitted by Grady Consulting dated July 3rd, 2018. Oh, and here we have it. Oh, wow.
That one would be a little bit easier to see.
Okay, so do you want to give us a little description of what you're looking to do here?
Sure. I understand we're blazing new territory here with the first scenic road application.
Well, no, we had one on Pheasant Lane.
Oh, okay.
Over on...
Alden.
Alden.
Oh, sure.
Which is also considered a scenic way, but we have not had to utilize this very frequently. And so here we are.
Very good. So what we did here was we staked the center line of the proposed subdivision roadway. The stakes are located near the existing stone wall. There's a small portion of existing stone wall which we're proposing to remove. We wanted to utilize the existing stones for proposed stone wall matching the existing wall. We've identified a few pine trees along the stone wall that will be removed as part of the roadway construction. We've identified one large maple tree, 30-inch maple tree, that we actually believe we can retain between the sidewalk and the edge of pavement for the proposed road. We submitted previously a detailed landscape plan as part of the subdivision, so there'll be a significant number of trees planted along the entrance in accordance with the approved subdivision plan. Glad to answer any questions you may have. The photographs also keyed in, so you can actually take a look at the individual trees if you want to see them in the photos as well.
Okay. And which one of the ones in the color photo, do you know where the maple tree is in there?
I do. Let me just put this upside down for one second here. I hung ribbons on each of the trees to be removed. The maple tree is actually off to this side of the photograph right here.
Oh, okay, so it's the thick one there. Anybody else?
No.
It's this one.
So in your capacity as Tree Warden, do you have any questions or concerns about...
No. And there is a memorandum from the chair that Guy Cocke did in here. I guess we gotta replace it.
So is it like the three-to-one replacement? Is that in a different area or kind of in the same area?
Anywhere in that general area.
Okay.
So would the landscape plan take care of this, is I guess my wondering?
Yeah, I think it goes above and beyond the minimum that we usually ask for.
Okay.
And then how much stone wall is being taken out of the entrance?
Approximately 30 feet.
30 feet. And you'll use that...
You're gonna use that in radius?
In radius.
Correct. So there's really none, no stone wall on this side of the entrance?
Oh, there isn't right now, okay.
Correct. It goes from roughly the middle of the entrance to the right. And so we want to use those same stones to rebuild an entrance or belong to the sidewalk.
Back of the sidewalk.
Yeah. That portion of stone wall is kind of in disrepair anyway, so the stone wall probably be a little bit nicer than what currently exists there.
Yeah, that's what it looks like. This is not very much of a stone wall, is it?
I just wonder if the stone walls should follow the property line or if it needs to for utilities and stuff like that.
That's where the point is, I think. The new wall is going on the back of the sidewalk, which is the lot line.
But isn't it, I think it's, I think it looks like there's a gap between the new stone wall and the property line.
Yeah, we actually set it back off the back edge of sidewalks approximately two feet. Whether it follows the exact property line or something between that and sidewalk, it's whatever the board's pleasure on that.
Jim, what were you saying? That it should follow where?
Maybe follow the property line rather than, just so we have room if we need utilities or utility structures there.
So it should be further back from the sidewalk?
Yeah.
I see what you're saying.
You know what I mean? Because we used that right of way for...
A lot of reasons?
Yep.
The only thing is aesthetically, is that gonna look less...
I don't think so.
We might have to remove a little bit more stone wall to accomplish that, so that it comes in starting right from this angle point and then comes in. So we'd have to take out about another 10 feet to follow the property line to do that.
All right, so right now you're planning on leaving that there?
You wanna leave that 10 feet or so and then just parallel the sidewalk.
And that's part of the scenic way.
And that's part of the scenic way, so that's gonna require more removal from the scenic way.
So that's why we chose that location. It's where we felt we didn't need to disturb the existing wall any further.
What about the other side?
It didn't have a stone wall.
Did I have to question?
Um, yeah, go ahead. Just identify yourself.
There's a, the boundary is here and right here was a...
Michael Tyler. Michael Tyler. I'm sorry.
I'm gonna butter.
He's hearing up here, so he doesn't... Oh, okay.
There's a car path right here with the wall. It's been, the wall has been pushed back to the side. Were you gonna, we...
Align it?
Bring the wall back out again? Or what was your plan on the car path?
Should be addressed to the board.
I'll tell you.
Do you have a response to that?
We won't be touching the stone wall at all on that portion.
On that portion of the property?
Correct. It'll stay as it is.
As it is.
The car path was open along, going pushing those rocks to the side. I think it might be best to bring it back out.
What do you guys think? Any thoughts on that?
Was it pushed out by this developer?
No, it wasn't.
And I don't know how we can make him responsible for something he hasn't done. I mean, I can understand, you know, relocating the wall with the radius, but I don't think we can make him go back and undo stuff that he isn't responsible for.
And Gene, you're more, your role is more with the trees than with the brick wall. Okay.
I think this particular developer does a really nice job on everything he goes after. Pretty sure he's gonna leave it. Pretty respectable.
Is it a big deal to pull out, to straighten out that little bit of wall that was pushed?
Which is enough stone for the existing stone wall to do that. I have no problem with that. But to kind of create the radius, then I have to use it. It's not gonna work to bring in new stone.
No, no. That's not the intent.
And I would think the radius is gonna be more compelling in terms of the look than the part that might get hidden in the trees. So if there's enough stones, you're saying you would kind of clean up the layout of the stone fence, but not replace fence, really, is what we're saying.
Correct.
Any other...
Do we need the roll? Is there enough room for all utilities there? The notes, there is. I guess that would be the only issue.
Gene, in your DPW hat, do you have any feelings about the corner there and the radius of that stone wall?
No, not at all.
Okay.
That's the side the utilities are going on, on this side here with the wall. Side closest us.
Well, they're probably, I don't know. So I guess the question that I'm hearing, can you identify yourself in the record?
Yeah, Star Radlin, yeah, 279 Ellen Street. Utilities that are going in, are they on this side or are they on that side?
Okay, so if you could let us know.
Yeah, we'll have water on one side, we'll have electrical on the other side.
And these are all underground utilities within the subdivision, right?
Correct.
Yes, everyone wants that these days.
We really talk about stone walls and trees. Aren't we really talking about stone walls?
Well, yeah, but I guess the question is whether or not where they're putting the stone wall, is that gonna interfere in any way with utilities? That was the question.
It's just usually at the entrance way, that's where you have all the, you know, cross boxes for the phone and all that.
Are the boxes and all that gonna be in front of the stone wall or behind it? They're gonna be behind it, right?
So we're still waiting on the electrical layout from ever source or Insta. And they'll make the final decision on that. It'll likely be behind it.
I mean, in that sense, it would be nice if it was behind that wall from an aesthetic perspective, which I think you would prefer too.
I think it can be behind it.
You can't block the, have to be able to get to those transformers. Everything's aerial there, right? So it's gonna have to come down off a pole and commit to a junction box and then go underground. So that's, I'm just bringing that up, just to make sure there's room to do that.
Sure.
And still meet the requirements.
Is there?
The utility companies aren't gonna climb over a wall to get to their junction box. I'm thinking of the other developments in town. They typically, you know, like any open space, so they mean, I don't see a lot of them right at the corner.
Yeah, the transformer's usually in about 30, 40 feet. I would expect to see it probably up near this bound. And they usually put it on easement on the lot.
On somebody's lot.
Right.
I have it on my lot. I was the lucky one.
So I'm sure we can work with them on that.
Yeah, just make sure you work with them, I guess, that's fine.
You were gonna add something.
I'm just saying is that we're working with what existing stone is there. And I think it's more aesthetically beneficial if I continue the stone wall from the corner towards Tyler's and bring it as far as it'll go. I don't think bringing and see where it ends, because if there's not gonna be a stone wall on the other side of the road, then how's it gonna look if we go take it to the one side of the stone and there's still a space in the wall? So that's my opinion.
So what were you suggesting instead?
That we rebuild the area that was taken out and wherever it ends, it ends. Just use the existing stones.
Sure.
As far as they'll go.
And don't loop it in the way this shows?
We'll loop it in as far as the stones will go.
Where the car path is, I think you're saying is over rocks up, neighborhood, whatever it is.
It just wouldn't look right to have this section of stone with a space and then nothing on the other side of it. I want it to look right.
Okay.
And that's regardless of, you know...
The rules.
Everything else, I just think aesthetically it would look better.
Right.
I agree.
I have a bunch of stones on my property that need some extras. I'm gonna... It's not, I do, I have a ton of them.
I was about to say the same thing.
But I think the issue is that to go and haul stones and bring them in, there's a cost involved to all of that. And the question is what we can reasonably expect the developer to do here. And I think if he's, if we're getting assurances that we'll have the stone wall continued as far as we can using the existing stones, I'm hearing that the board believes that that would be reasonable to require under the scenic road bylaw. And then to have the maple tree staying, but there'll just be a little bit of a trim of it for the roadway. And then there will be a three-to-one replacement of the white pine and the pines, which are already have some issues because they've been trimmed so much by National Grid, is that...
Correct.
And then on number three and four, those pines, one is dead and the other one is, has already been trimmed 70 percent. So those are just have a one-to-one replacement. And that is a replacement anywhere on the site?
Correct.
Is that the, okay. And we have enough replacements coming in to the site to make up for these trees that are gonna be taken out?
Yes.
As part of this project? Any other questions or concerns on this one?
I know it's not in the purview of this meeting, but is there any way to soften the curb atriums that come out on the street? Like makes them look like a city-type block. I know it's, I don't know, probably regulation, you have to do that?
Gene, do you want to help us understand?
No, it's gotta stay standard. You can't change by road. Every project would end up different. Everything's gotta be uniform.
And that has to do with if you ever have to redo the road, you're dealing with uniform curb cuts.
Yeah, but you're on Taylor Street. Everything's gotta be uniform.
Which is part of, I think, why Route 14 took longer too, was a lot of that had to be redone along the way there.
That's to change the layout.
Yeah.
A lot of locations, yes.
A lot of different locations. A lot of roads that had happened over the years in different ways. So our regulations require us to do uniform curb cuts so that it creates over time some uniformity in how these roads connect up. And also, we're gonna have a sidewalk on one side of the street, right?
No.
And so that's the other thing, is there's a theory that down the road, any roads could be expanded to have sidewalks. So we're always requiring developers to have more sidewalks within the subdivision and to build it out to the street in a way that if there's ever a subdivision on that street, it could connect right in theoretically.
Yeah, that's the biggest request we get through our office, is everybody wants sidewalks on this street.
Yeah.
And ADA is a big push right now, so.
That's the other thing, the sidewalks that do come out to the main road have to be ADA compliant and current ADA compliance.
Correct.
And so that's part of why they have to be so big, is to make that, and also for visibility. Any other...
Yeah, they have to be concrete, the ramps, with what I call the rumble strip.
So, yeah.
So that's, that's the ADA compliance, that's the new reg, so.
The rumble strip is newer, right?
Yeah, so is the concrete.
Oh, is it?
Used to be able to do asphalt.
Oh, okay.
All ramps have to be concrete.
My time's short.
Well, we had it up at Pheasant Lane, we had it at a couple subdivisions.
Well, and there was an issue because they had it, started it before that reg would impose it.
Yeah, and we made it do it to the current regs.
To the current regs, yeah.
So...
Okay, so...
I was just gonna say going, so...
We're about to finish up this hearing and start our next one.
Right, so I was just wondering, do we, do we, I can't remember how we did on Pheasant Lane, do we vote or is it just having the hearing?
That's not clear in the statute.
The bylaw is okay.
Having read the statute, that's not clear.
I think that the builders agreed to reconstruct the wall where it was taken down and extend it as far as you can.
With the existing stone?
With the existing stone. So if it falls short of the radius, it does.
I just have one question. And Rick, the problem is, I haven't shown how many stone or up to stone wall there is there now. If there's enough for me to do the two radiuses, then I don't have any problem doing that, but I don't think there is.
There's definitely not enough to do.
I would think that if you fill in the gap and then run it as far as you can...
Problem to the elm. I think that'll end up.
Right.
So it would be through this plan?
So we could just move to accept this plan?
Exactly.
As presented?
Exactly.
Let me move that, please.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We also need the Tree Warden to vote on that?
Yes.
And...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, so the public hearing on Libby's Lane is closed and now we have to open a...
Don't hit the ball on.
Oh, second for closing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we need to open our next public hearing. So we're good on you guys. You're all set?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. This is a very nice way to do this, so thank you.
Do you think part of the utilities are numbered down because it's kind of the way most of the towns are?
Well, we're new at this. We don't have a lot of scenic ways, I guess.
We have seven of them.
In the matter, we've been missing it.
With just no general...
Well, we haven't been doing a lot of scenic ways. We've been asked to do them.
Who's this?
That's for this.
That's for this one?
Yeah.
Okay, Chris.
I think they provided this. This is our packet.
So I'm going to open the next public hearing for scenic road and public shade tree requirements for subdivision number 1701 located at 73 Taylor Street and entitled Bristol Estates, consisting of seven new family, single-family houses and a new cul-de-sac road. This is a joint public hearing with the Tree Warden as well.
Hey, folks, my name is Tom Bezierski from Maryland Engineers in Hanover. And this subdivision was approved, as you know, as a subdivision that's under construction. And I was fortunate enough, I went through the archives and I found this photograph. The photograph that you have in front of you, that the roadway cuts into the subdivision. And if you note, you'll see some remnants of a stone wall here, that's the propping line, that's where the edge of the Taylor Street layout is. And you'll also note that we have a utility pole, which is this utility pole right here. Okay? There are no trees in the layout. There was zero trees lost as a result of proving and constructing the roadway. And you can see from the stone wall there, there's pumped out a whopping 10 or 12 stones. The wall's just remnants of a stone wall at that point that were lost as a result of the roadway coming in. There are other areas in the subdivision where there are much better defined walls, but in this particular area, there was almost no stone walls present.
So there were no trees taken down?
Zero.
In the layout.
Zero.
Okay.
And we preserved, when we did this lot here, we preserved the trees along this side to provide screening along Taylor Street. So, still natural.
Yeah, it doesn't look like you've done a lot of grading at the entrance right there either.
No, we didn't.
Can I just take a quick look?
You sure, Ken?
And this utility pole is issued to the pole here. And this is where the roadway went in here. The layout, edge of the layout's in here.
So these trees weren't in the layout?
Nope. Private property.
You see on the other plan, they, the wall is located on that one, where the stone wall.
So seeing that there are no trees removed here and no issue for the scenic road bylaw, I'd make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Did we give an opening for the public to comment or what?
I, that's...
Okay.
Go ahead.
Were there any comments before we closed the public hearing on this?
No. So I've made the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Dan Taylor seconded that. Does the Tree Warden have anything that we need to look at or...
No.
Are you in agreement that there was nothing taken out of the layout?
I concur.
Okay. So all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Then we're all done.
Thank you.
Tom, was that your shortest hearing ever?
The old house, is that the same?
There was something we wanted to talk to Gene about.
Tom, is that your, Tom, is that your shortest public hearing ever?
Was it, was it the solar?
I think it's mine too.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we have it at 7:30, but I'm gonna say we pick it up a little early.
Let's pick it up now.
So Gene, one of the, we had, the next thing on our agenda, we'll move it forward a little bit early, we'll hear anybody if they come in a little bit late, but we had talked about potential visual screening options along Habermock Street for the Habermock Solar Project.
Yep.
And so we had done a site walk or two, two or three weeks ago. And we noticed that you guys had recently redone the fence.
That's recycling center, that's their budget and their maintenance.
Oh, that's their...
Recycling supervisor, Mike Valenti.
So interesting, because we were talking, so we have $20,000, $25,000 in escrow right now that the solar project gave as a condition of not having to do a landscaping plan. We said, well, give us $25,000, over time, we'll, over the next two years, we'll look at it, we'll hear from the neighbors and try to use that $25,000 to create some visual screening from the roadways to protect, you know, just to protect the look of the area for the roadway and for the abutters. And when Paul Whitman was still on the board, our thinking was, well, let's wait until after the sidewalk project is done there and the street's repaved, so we sort of see what we're dealing with. And also, you don't want road construction right after you're planting new plants, right? But the question becomes, as we were out there the other day, is does it make more sense to extend that fence along the street? But now the question would be who would maintain it? I was thinking that, we thought that the other fence also was DPW budget.
That all falls onto the recycling supervisor and the solid waste budget.
Well, we could talk to them about maintaining it.
Should we talk to them about maintaining it?
Yeah, we can talk to Mike.
What, how many feet, were we talking about adding to it?
We talked about adding possibly 100 feet maximum.
Yeah, 'cause you just said all that replaced it, we can, we can handle it.
Right. And when I talked to Mike, he suggested that we maybe put mulch along the entire front of where the fence is. But if you, when we say 300 feet of mulch...
What, on the backside of the sidewalk?
Between the sidewalk and the fence. And we were putting plants in there. Because any plant we put in there is not gonna screen anything for a long time.
No, if it survives. Yeah, to keep it watered.
And I don't want anything out there that's gonna repeat the new sidewalk, 'cause you know it's gonna happen. The roots are gonna go like some of the subdivisions already.
Well, and so that's what we were debating out there was, and that's why we said, okay, well, let's put this on the agenda right after, if Gene's gonna be here for the tree hearing, we can talk to you about, you know, there were people who, the, one of the abutters was hoping that we were gonna put some plants to screen in between. There's one gap between the trees that's bigger, the rest of the gaps aren't that big. The biggest gap is that first part where the fence would probably be the best visual and the lowest maintenance, even if it ended up in the town's general budget. A town's probably easier to maintain than more bushes and things that might...
Oh, yeah, because I don't have resources available now for what I have to deal with, never mind trying to add anything new.
What do you think about us giving you some, I mean, is this a project where we could work with the DPW to use the mulch and pay for a mulching project along there that might beautiful, you know, kind of finish off the sidewalk project with some found money?
I'm sure I could take care of mulch. Mulch work and getting that done, but I mean, who wouldn't be looking to get any planting of trees and then the maintenance of trees and stuff afterwards and watering?
But if we had, like, say that the fence took, I don't know, $15,000 and we had another $10,000, could we allocate that to the DPW to use for, you know, mulching that area?
Yeah, if you wash the blocks between back of the sidewalk and up to the fence or whatever you guys want, we could fit that in.
Whatever you can do with $10,000. And I don't know if you do it with your own staff or you bid that out, but that would be up to you really.
Would you prefer, would you prefer to get the funds and have the project for some of the town's employees to do, or would you prefer to see it all done?
I'd rather see it all done, farmed up.
Would you be willing to be the one to farm out? My concern, Dan, is that we don't really have a lot of experience.
So in our initial, when you initially brought this up, I misinterpreted. I didn't, I thought those were town funds that needed to be spent.
Well, they're escrowed under the control of the planning board, but the planning[1705.25] board doesn't really have a tremendous amount of expertise at public bidding, right?
Correct.
So, somebody else is gonna have to help us with the public bidding if we take on to do it ourselves, and it just seems like you would rather be in control of it.
All that stuff goes through the town administrator, he's the...
Public bidding person?
Procurement officer.
So, it doesn't matter?
So, the town manager will take all procurement. So, technically, it's town administrator does all the procurement. We provide what we need and then he's supposed to do the solicitation.
We could probably make a request through the town manager to put a bid out under, because we've done it before.
Is that what you would prefer us to?
Yeah, if you keep it low enough, then you just gotta solicit three prices, best practices, you're good to go.
Is that, is that still ten grand?
Ten grand. If you get up to twenty-five, then you're talking central register and all that. Try and keep it ten grand and under, you could.
Twenty-five, they're good, right?
They might have opted, I know they were talking about opening it.
So, you do the fence as a contractor and the mulching as a contractor?
Those are gonna be two different contractors, right?
Two different contractors, and see how they come in, you gotta shorten the fence, you gotta lessen the mulch.
Mike, but do you have any objection to the fact that someone's gonna be mulching along your brand-new sidewalk?
No, because I'll hold them responsible for any damage. They'll have to have a roadway permit and a bond anyway, even though they're not in the road, they're working in the right of way. So, if there's any damages, they still gotta have a bond to cover.
Yeah, well, plus they'll have to have a bond through us anyway, so.
I'm, I'm just looking for the least complicated way to get this beautified a little bit with the money we have.
I think you put the fence in first and then do the contract for the mulch.
Exactly.
So, you can see what you got.
And is that your right of way? So, out from where the fence is now to where the trees are along the side, behind the sidewalk, if we kept that same fence on and went to the next set of trees, which is what we're talking about, that's sixty, a hundred feet, is that your right of way or is that, whose control is that under?
Recycling center.
Recycling center?
Yeah, it's recycling. My right of way is probably just about behind the edge of sidewalk now.
So, that's who we have to talk to?
That's, that should be a problem, I'm sure they're gonna be happy to, to screen whenever, whenever they can.
Like, Tom and I could separately get prices from good people that are completely separate from us, but that we know do good work.
Yeah.
Just for you guys, just for the board to review.
And get it done.
And the town administrator and you and the...
Or we just give it to the town administrator and say, "Here's what we, what we think we need done. We need the extra fencing for the, for the recycling center, we, we need the mulching." That's it, and let, let him...
Let him figure it out.
Let him do it?
Yeah.
And maybe we say, "We've got fifteen thousand or twenty thousand dollars available to this."
Where you get, where it gets complicated, like you dump that on the town administrator, we've had a conversation about it, now he's gonna get pricing on it and there's no, there's nothing in writing as to what he's getting pricing on.
Right.
One of us...
We need some kind of a sketch or something. We need a fence from here to here, at least, at least...
Well, we'd ask Peter maybe about doing a sketch.
I could meet the people out there and say, "This is what we need to bring." And then they can price it and you, the board can compare the proposal.
And then we hand it over to the town administrator.
Here, his detailed proposal, his ones we liked, these make the most sense, these are what we talked about, so, because if we dump that on the town administrator, I mean...
We may not get what we think we're getting.
You can also ask Mike Valenti, because he just did three prices for the fence and it just got replaced. It might be close enough to it, he could just go back to the low bidder for the extra footage.
And he knows what he wants.
Do a change order on that contract.
Mike and I have already talked about that, Gene.
Oh, that's the Mike you talked to?
Yeah, Mike Valenti.
Yeah, okay.
Becky, the easy way to do it is to give the existing contractor a change order to increase the length of the fence. It's probably a contract in place.
As long as it doesn't exceed twenty-five percent, it's no problem.
Yep.
Well, that's fine with that, I think that's...
And then we just have to have you go out to figure out what the mulch and the sort of cleaning up and dressing up the area.
You could dump it all on Mike, he's the man, he'll get it done perfect.
You call Mike.
We need to move quick before that contract's closed out and gone, the one we already have.
Okay, so, do we wanna authorize Matthew to talk to, or Dan Smith, one of you, to talk to Mike Valenti and try to move that project forward?
Yep.
Do you wanna do it, Dan?
I'll do whatever you guys need.
Do you wanna do it, Tom?
Mike and I, Mike and I worked together for seventeen years.
Okay, so do you wanna talk to Mike Valenti?
I'll talk to Mike.
Okay. Do we have a, do we need to do a motion on that, or is that just, they're gonna come back with proposal?
We'll come back with results.
Okay. All right, thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
So, Tom, to...
Hey, Gene.
So, Tom, I mean, vaguely speaking, how, how much does a fence like that cost?
I, I think it would, I wanna say that it was forty-six dollars a foot, if I remember.
Okay, but we're gonna find out when you get some pricing.
Well, I'll talk to Mike about it and we'll get, yeah.
All right, so...
And, and we know, we know somebody who makes mulch in towns.
Don't try me into it, I guess I'm following your call.
Okay, so, we have, I'm gonna go through some of our admin items before our next agenda item comes up. We have, our next board meeting is August thirteenth, for your, everyone to note for their records. We received a card to the planning board from Brian Van Raper's family and there's copies in your folders. There's gonna be a basketball tournament in Brian's memory on September fifteenth at the community center. His, his wife and family have invited us to have a team from the planning board. I'm wondering if my son could play on that.
But there's a thought.
I'm your grandson, he'd be happy to.
Yeah, basketball days are over.
Oh, yeah, you're tall enough.
With my luck, I'd break something.
Oh, no.
So, the question is, we'll find out more information about this.
Yeah, do that.
It's intriguing.
It's intriguing.
That's a nice way of putting it.
We need to approve the minutes for July ninth.
For that one, I guess, I'm sorry, I guess it's complicated for us, because of how I described it, just because it might be a serious sensitive thing, how I described it, returning the balance of the price.
I don't know why.
And I just sort of tried to be as transparent and clear as possible.
I don't think we really do.
I don't think we need to say that.
I don't, I think there's too much detail.
Yeah, I don't think we have to, I, I would move that we, well, I would ask...
Paragraph two could go.
Oh, I was actually thinking the second sentence of the first paragraph.
Well, the second sentence, let's get rid of that. It's just not necessary.
You need to say it last?
Yeah, okay, no, paragraph two could stay then.
That's all you need.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't think you need to overthink it.
No.
All right, so we'll remove that second sentence of the first paragraph, and with that changed, do we have a motion to approve these minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve these minutes with that sentence removed.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Are there some favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
Including the Mr. Smith was absent.
Right, because it's in the final paragraph.
Yep.
So, I'm sorry, remove the sentence, this was listed as an agenda item, but we're going to...
All the way to the end of the paragraph?
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Oh, yeah.
Do you wanna abstain from that vote?
Yeah, you kinda lost me here, well, this was last week, I'm not sure what you're talking about, so.
You don't need to.
You were present, so you can abstain.
I'm gonna abstain. I heard that, granted address, so I think I'll stay on it.
Okay. We have some issue about the curving in catch basins at Bristol Estates. You know, I didn't see this when we had...
Apparently that's...
When we had Bristol Estates here, I didn't see that.
Yeah, somewhere in the middle, I think, of your, of your quarters, it's...
Tyler's report.
It was a one-page letter from Tyler Gims.
Yeah, I read it, it wasn't particularly good.
And, I mean, he talked to me about it today. It's, it's kind of hard to verbally, it's pretty sensitive to be there, talk verbally, it's probably, unless you're nuclear, I suppose. But basically, I guess, the, the curving, the stone curbs they're using for the, I don't know what's the phrase, the terminal thing, I guess, sort of the transition between the vertical granite curving and the kickcock berm, or the vitu miniscoff shaving berm, isn't the one that's specified in the rules and regs and shown in the drawings. So, I mean, it's, it's still, I mean, I guess, you know, the appearance is maybe not quite as good and it's an issue sometimes if, like, if, if one gets knocked out of place by a snowplow, for example, the DPW might not have extra ones of those to put in. So, it sounds to me like it's maybe not, and then also there's an issue with the catch basins, I guess, they're not quite set up correctly. So, it sounds like they're not sort of massive issues, but they're issues that might, maybe should be corrected, so I think what...
The problem is that's...
I was wondering, should, should we pursue it and force them, or try to force them to fix it?
Well, Mike would look at it, because that's all very expensive stuff to fix.
Why aren't they, why aren't they doing this? Do you think they're trying to save money, or they just went by somebody else's town regs?
No, I think they just, I mean, to not line up the stone that is supposed to line up with the catch basin, it's like, it's just as easy to put it where it's supposed to be as to not put it where it's supposed to be.
And what difference does it make if it's not where it's supposed to be in the catch basin?
If it's way off, the water isn't gonna flow as well into the catch basin. What they're talking about is, if you've seen catch basins, sometimes you see a granite stone in the curbing?
Yeah.
That has a hole in it.
Yes.
So, it also allows water to go in.
Yes.
Well, if that hole doesn't, if the catch basin's here and the hole's over there, well...
Well, that would be kind of stupid.
Right, that's what I'm saying, I don't know why they would do that, it's just as easy to line it up as to...
It wasn't quite clear if, if exactly that's the problem, or if it's...
Well, I guess, we, we kinda need to see, how, how bad is it? Is it like, off an inch, or is it a foot off?
Well, it may be fixed by now.
Can we, can we ask the, can we ask the developer to respond to Tyler's letter?
Yeah, I mean, I can get in touch with the owner.
Well, but, but has Tyler heard from them back?
It, it doesn't sound like it, I think that's why he, he dropped off the letter today, because he's worried that, sort of, they're not getting, I mean, they did eventually reply to him, but it doesn't, he doesn't get the sense, I guess, that anything's gonna be done to fix it unless, you know, we, you know, he sort of pushes them further or we talk to them or something. I mean, I said to Tyler, like, maybe you could come in in two weeks and, and explain it to the board, but I suppose if we do that, it'd be good to have a owner or somebody with a project.
Well, I don't know why we don't just send this letter to the developer?
Well, they got it.
Who got it, and say the planning board would like to understand how these matters will be corrected.
Yeah, please, please provide a response.
Yeah, and they'll get the letter in a few days if they haven't gotten it yet, so see, see, see.
So, let's just ask for a response from them, the board.
That may be enough.
They could have fixed it by now.
For now, yeah. You get the sense though, those stones are staying right where they are until we jump up and down.
You're right, Gene.
I mean, why do we go through all this effort to do site plans if people are gonna follow them?
Well, this is kind of like the same stuff that we went through with...
Besen.
Besen Hill.
Besen Lane.
Lane. So, maybe it's best to send a letter saying, you know, I think that's a good idea, we don't need to vote on that, though.
No.
No, I think we just, we send that, as a, as a matter of course, we send that to, you know, some of the things we do during this checklist...
Well, Merrill, Merrill's their engineer, right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
So, they should be able to respond to us.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I mean, I can call, I can contact Thomas, but...
Did we sign the decision of Wolfston, or is that something we still need to do?
We have to sign it, right, Matthew?
I need to sign it, right?
I think I need to sign it, too.
Yeah, and I guess we got the quorum, and, yeah, I've got it for day thirty, but we can do it now, please.
Now, let's do it.
So, for that one...
Oh, I see, we have a, a possible vote, so they may come in, so let's hold off on that one.
Well, is there, really? We haven't voted on it yet?
No, we didn't vote on the waivers. We didn't vote on the waivers.
My bad, sorry about that.
You voted to grant site plan approval by having voted on, on the actual decision on the...
All right, we'll do that, we'll do, we'll do that when they might be here, so let's just hold off on that. The deadline for completion have passed for five ninety Washington Street and five ninety-three to five ninety-five Washington Street. Should we offer to return the engineering review balances? I guess my question is, do we get asbelts?
Um, I don't think so.
Okay, then I think the question would be, can they send us asbelts to be reviewed before we talk about releasing engineering balances? Does anybody disagree? I think that's part of the problem, is we're not always getting the asbelts, and, and this goes to the issue that we really haven't fully discussed, that I was supposed to send a letter on building permits and site, asbelts.
Occupancy permits.
Occupancy permits and asbel, oh, that's right, not building, occupancy permits. Dominique's Way subdivision, we still don't have his biased drawing, so I guess that's on hold, just so people know. We have, and, some information here updating on the progress of the two forty and two fifty-eight Oak Street litigation between Russell Field and Brian Murphy, where we were named, but we've taken a position of it's between the parties, that we're not really the real party in interest here. So, Rachel Keller, who is the Community Preservation Committee Administrative Assistant, has informed us that since Brian Van Raper's death, the planning board position on the Community Preservation Committee has been vacant. And per state law, a member of the planning board is supposed to be on the Community Preservation Committee. They only meet about four to eight times a year, and the meeting time is generally six-thirty PM on Thursday nights. Does anyone want, affirmatively want to be on the Community Preservation Committee?
I would pass.
Well, let me ask you this, does it tie into the other work you're doing, or...
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, on the...
Who else wants to do it?
Dan was raising his hand.
That's all right, though.
Oh, you?
Yeah, you go ahead.
I think you'd like any, any, much.
Let's not fight about this too hard.
Okay, so...
I will step, I will remove my interest from the consideration.
And do we have to appoint, or does the selectmen appoint that? Who points it?
No, I think, I think we have to send a member.
I think we have to send a member.
Okay.
Because it's a representative of the planning board onto the Community Preservation Committee, apparently. If they need further approvals from the board of selection, they can get them, but I think we say, so Andrew Wondell has agreed to be our representative. Does he want to make a motion that we appoint Andrew Wondell to be our designated representative for the Community Preservation Committee?
So, move.
Do we have a second?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining?
Great.
Okay, Andy, you have another job.
Good.
Okay. I think we're actually moving along here.
We are.
So, we're...
People get done before dark.
Well, the problem is we're half an hour early.
That's never a problem.
You know what? We had it eight, well, no, the only question is whether or not someone was coming in on two sixty, two eighty Oak Street.
Oh, yeah, they are.
They are coming in on that, so we can't move that up. And that's a half an hour from now. We could move up the issue of the possible reorganization of the planning board.
Is there, for reason, too?
Well, we have to, we have to reorganize every year.
We haven't done it.
And we haven't done it. We were waiting for John Shoal to come in. And we haven't done it. We were waiting for John Shoal to come in.
That we, we had agreed that we weren't gonna change the...
Yeah, but I think you still didn't need to go.
I thought, I thought we already did that. I think we usually do that when we, when we're new members. First time we're all together.
I did two years ago. You can do two years ago.
He's not here, but he's now a former. He's been sworn in and everything. So, we've now got our set of new memberships, I think.
No, you're great.
And you do have to do like a new signature sheet, which I've prepared.
So, why don't we go through the process very quickly then, since it doesn't take very long to do?
Yeah, I prepared. There's sort of...
And so, we've got, we've got this in here?
Yeah, it's near the top.
I didn't see it. Yeah.
It's too...
Oh, here it is.
All right, so...
Somebody...
I'll make, I'll make this initial motion that the planning board reorganize and consider nominations for the following positions: chairman, vice chairman, clerk, planning board assistant, and take any action on following meeting nights and signature plans. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so now we need nominations for chairman.
I'll nominate Becky Kletter for chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, you have to...
We have to close nominations on this.
I'll, I'll move that the nominations be closed.
A second?
Do we?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, now call for the vote for the chair.
Okay. Now...
Nominations are closed and vote for the chair, right?
Yep. This is weird. Okay, so our nominations have been closed for chair, and we will now vote. All in favor of myself as chair?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstaining? Okay.
Okay, I'll...
Nominations for vice chairman are now being accepted. I, can somebody...
I'll nominate Mr. Andrew Wondell for vice chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute. Oh, just for the nomination?
For the nomination.
All right, I'll move that we now close the nomination. This is ridiculous.
By Tim Moon, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we really have to go through all that?
Yep.
Do it.
Okay, nominations for clerk are now being accepted.
Um, I'll nominate Tom Irving for clerk.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move that we close the nominations for clerk.
All in favor of closing nominations? Aye. All right, all in favor of Mr. Irving as our clerk?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Planning board assistant probably doesn't need to be done anymore, because it wouldn't be annual town meeting. The salary is negotiated by the...
Well, I think we still have to technically appoint our agent under the, there are certain... So, by statute, we're supposed to be able to appoint an agent. And I think there are certain, certain statutory...
All right, I'll move that we appoint Matthew Heine as the planning board assistant.
Second.
To retain his planning board assistant at the salary approved at the annual town meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now...
I think everybody signed that.
This actually, why did all of you say mister?
Because it was a date.
It was written in nineteen sixty?
Far more misogynistic. I'll make a motion...
We're still six to one, people.
I wish we haven't succeeded very much, have we?
No.
Forget the chair.
I'll make a motion that the planning board continue to hold its official meetings on the second and fourth Monday of each month convening at six thirty PM in the designated planning board room.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining?
I'll make a motion that Tom Irving be authorized to sign plans. Submissed clerk.
Second.
Which are not subject to subdivision control and to certify any action of the board?
Second.
That's correct.
Yes.
Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstaining? All right, so we are now officially reorganized. We'll have signature cards. Do you have those prepared?
I did, and I was anticipating that everybody would be...
But John Shoal still needs to sign so that his signature gets on the registry.
Yeah, so I'll get it from him sometime this week or next week when he comes back, I guess.
Okay, great.
Where is that for?
So, the other discussion item tonight that seems, if somebody comes in later, we can talk about it, but is the, I'm gonna propose we move up on the agenda the discussion about possible changes to the zoning bylaws? Bylaws?
I have a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry, just, I'm very sorry, but I guess, can you guys do this thirty-day extension for Dominic's Way?
Oh. Does anyone wanna move? We have a request here...
I'll move the...
That we have a thirty-day extension for the definitive subdivision number eighteen oh one entitled Dominic's Net Day Way to extend the deadline from August fifth to September fourth, twenty eighteen.
Second.
You moved?
I moved it.
Do you second it?
Aye.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. We have an extension. All right.
Uh, yeah, I put it on the top and I actually, it was more like a headline than a like...
Oh, I see, okay.
Weird.
Confuse me. So, changes to the zoning bylaws?
Becky, I have a quick question on that. Are we, how do we conform to the open meeting law? Do we have to, like, discuss any changes at a regularly scheduled meeting? Or can we have a, like, a working session? Or does that have to be limited to three members or how do we, how do we go about doing that?
So, what I had learned at some point recently is that if we have a subcommittee to look at the bylaws and say, do we have changes we need to make, then that subcommittee becomes subject, if it's a formal subcommittee of the board, that subcommittee becomes subject to the open meetings law. So, the subcommittee then needs to meet and post agendas and meeting schedules. But we don't necessarily need a quorum of the whole board. We just need a quorum of the subcommittee in order to hold those meetings. So, it becomes a little easier to have a working group than to have the whole group talk about it. But I do think we should take a few minutes as a whole group and talk about what kind of changes do we think are needed. I know there's a few that have cropped up that I've heard about, people talking about. We had, one was the, the question of whether or not, we were talking about the other day as part of the housing production plan.
Yeah.
Which we need to take up soon in another meeting, whether we're gonna...
I actually read through a lot of that, and it all seems great, but really where the rubber meets the road is what do we come up with for, you know, for some new zoning regs?
What do you mean? We need a lot of new zoning regs?
The housing production plan doesn't do anything. It's the zoning regs that are, that you come up with.
Right.
Are actually where the, you know, where you make changes.
Right, and what, was it one of the ideas there that to include in it, inclusionary zoning? Isn't that the term used?
That was one thing, I mean, the other, but that can mean different things, right?
Right.
Yeah, it can be anything we come up with, as long as it, like, gets to that goal, was my understanding. But I, I actually, in reading through all that information, I came up with more questions than I had answers. One big thing is I didn't have a full understanding of how affordable units that we had before suddenly fell off the rolls. And then I don't have a clear understanding as if you, if you have a rental unit and it's got a deed restriction, how would that ever fall off the rolls or stuff like that? If it's a rental unit, who decides who gets rented to?
So, I guess the question is whether anyone ever followed through in putting a deed restriction on those units, whether it was a rental unit as part of a single-family home, right?
Right, which, which, under our current zoning bylaws, is allowed as long as it's allowed for affordable housing use.
And it would count, but I don't think we've ever had a system for tracking...
But I thought, it seemed to me like that we were tracking them for a couple of years and then a unit would suddenly, like, fall off. But I don't know how that happens if it's recorded at the registry of deeds.
It shouldn't if it's recorded.
Yeah. I just, I'd like to understand what the issue is before we write a zoning ordinance that allows it to keep happening.
I think with zoning, there's sort of two, I mean, I mean, part of the reason I'm mentioning this is just because in the two years I've been here, I've sort of seen some, just kind of some zoning things that kind of have come up that sort of need to be cleaned up, which probably aren't controversial, but just sort of just be objected, maybe I can make a list or make a more formal list that you guys can review.
But I don't think that addresses Jim's issue. So, Jim's issue is that according to our zoning bylaws, if someone wants to do an accessory unit that is not an in-law unit, they, if they meet the affordability requirements, they are allowed to do it provided they get a deed restriction on the use of that unit. But the question is, were they really deed restrictions or was it just part of the building permit and we kind of lost track of enforcement over time?
That's what I'm thinking.